Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight is the February 22nd Council Briefing. We have three items on the agenda for tonight to discuss with Council. The first one is one of the council priorities that was just reaffirmed with the new council a couple of months ago. And that is the Charter Review Phase Two. Last year, we conducted Phase One, which was to clean up a handful of items that were specific to the council direction. Phase Two is effectively a review of the entire charter document. I'm going to turn it over to the city attorney and Cliff Shepherd to speak a little bit more on this particular initiative.
Hi there, everyone. Okay, so this is the briefing item on Charter Phase Two revisions. And the prior city council set some initiatives for Charter Review Phase One and Phase Two. We handled Phase One, and the four referendum were adopted and approved, and those are in place and in our charter. So based on the timeline that was established for the city council initiatives, we're coming up on the Phase Two work as scheduled on the timeline. And you all know, well, some of, most of you know, and for those council members that don't know, Cliff Shepherd is an expert in everything. He is an, he's our outside consultant for the CRA. He's also our Charter Review Expert. And Cliff, you may, council members may have viewed Cliff's videos with respect to the ethics training and the public rec, public records laws, and I mentioned that Cliff is one of our outside expert consultants. And anyhow, he is an expert, and he's here to help us through the Charter Two Phase revisions. We attached Cliff's memorandum and recommendation on how to approach the Phase Two revisions. And in our, in my memorandum, Mike, that Mike submitted, it points out that Mike and I agree with Cliff as to his recommended approach. I'll turn it over to Cliff, and if you, the city council, have any questions after Cliff reviews his synopsis, we'll be glad to answer your questions. Thanks, Cliff.
Super. Well, thank you, Chris, and I appreciate the opportunity to be before you today. In preparing me to prepare you, one of the things that both Chris and Mike agreed on is that while my memo, the memo that you've already been provided with a copy, could have been significantly longer, then that would not be in my interest if I wished to continue to be your counsel or your interest in trying to get to the bottom line. And so I appreciate bottom-line kind of folks. The reason I mention that, though, is because while this is a bullet-pointed memorandum that goes through the procedure I recommend, I can expand and expound on any of these points based on actual experience, because all of these points are based on the actual experience. I've done charter reviews, I'm gonna say conservatively, 20 times, and I've done various configurations of those that have taught me lessons along the way about what not to do, as much as they've taught me about what to do. Most recently, and actually, in a certain way, it's ongoing, I was the Charter Review Council for Orange County's charter. And Orange County, down here in Orlando area, is a growing county of almost 1.6 million people, once we get the next survey from the census done. And so it was a pretty big deal with 17 members on the Charter Review Commission. That definitely would fall in the category of how not to do it, and I'll be happy to give you why. The more successful ones I've been on are the ones that are some version of what I've outlined here. So I'll go through the points, give you a little bit of additional explanation, and then I'll be free to answer questions, whatever you want. So a lot of times in cities that I've represented, there's been a temptation from the elected officials to point some sort of a blue ribbon or selected citizen council or commission to do the review process. That's looked at, from a political standpoint, as a favorable way of getting community involvement, and also from getting additional input. It sounds great. It's terrible. And the reason it's terrible is not because I don't value citizen input, it's because the citizen input has to be informed input, and that's where the problem is. Because frequently, people who are picked, while they may be very smart people, they don't always have the knowledge, the working knowledge of how government works on a day-to-day basis. And perhaps, and again, I'm not obviously pointing fingers, I don't know any of you that well, the same kind of uninformed but interested background that you might have brought as a newly-elected official at some point. And so what happens in that situation is that the politicians then get bound up in knots, because citizens would think what they think are good ideas bring to the table ideas that are not workable in the government structure, and then the politicians, the elected officials, have the unpleasant duty of telling them, no, we can't do that. So you created your own obstacle that makes you look like you're not trying to do their will, when in fact, all you're really trying to do is follow what the law permits. So that's the primary basis. There's more reasons behind that, but that's, that's the primary one. Scheduling a series of special public meetings limited to Charter Review itself, rather than an add-on, is simply to keep you focused and on task. When you try to add them on as a, add-on to a meeting, the meetings can go much longer than what they may already go, and it's better to focus on the task at hand and, and get it done in that way. It also allows you to limit the meetings to specific portions of the charter and take them on in a way that you know when the meeting begins, and when you get to that last section you're reviewing, you know when it ends. And that's why I suggested bullet point number three, which is to make an agenda specific to each meeting, that's specific to the portions of the charter, the sections of the charter, and your charter has 11 sections that you were reviewing at that meeting. In certain meetings where the sections are longer or more complicated or may have more issues, you may use, review less sections. In other meetings where they're incredibly short or non-consequential, you may put in four or five in one meeting. And so that's the reason for doing it that way. But you know at the end of the review that you've reviewed every section of the document. That is stark contrast, for example, to the system I just went through, and because of litigation, I'm still going through to some degree with Orange County, where there was no attempt to review the charter from start to finish, but instead, these citizens appointed by the county commission just came with ideas of things they wanted that had nothing to do with the existing charter. Things like, we want to put in a rights-of-nature provision, so anybody who wants to can sue if water's polluted. Again, whether you feel good or bad about that as an idea, it's the kind of thing that allows the train to run off the tracks and avoids the actual issue, which is reviewing the charter at hand. Not to say that new ideas are important, but they also have to be ideas that can get, have a reasonable chance of, of success legally and, and passage, but also such, you want the new ideas to overcome the, the general purpose, which is to review the actual charter. You conduct your meetings like regular meetings, you allow the public comment period like, that you're all familiar with, before you get to the actual discussion of sections where it should be amongst the, the members there, you have the public input. And that's where, for example, you may well hear some new ideas or ideas for additions that you hadn't considered. That's where you'll get your citizen input. But you keep the discussion part of the issue, once you've gone to that portion of the meeting, amongst you all. And, and that way, they work more like a workshop, so you can discuss pros and cons, bounce ideas off each other, and off me as your legal counsel as to what is legally doable, and those kinds of things. And you don't need to waste time on drafting. You're certainly free to. But one of the reasons you have a lawyer to do a charter view is you come up with the idea of what you want, and then you turn it over to the lawyer to come up with the language that meets all the requirements of the law. The title, the summary, the actual amendment themselves. For the charter part amendments we just did, I think Chris will back me up, we had two or three amendments that were desired by you all, or at least most of you all, and I was able to knock those things out pretty quickly and turn them around in a way that was legally enforceable, met all the requirements, and avoided non-lawyers trying to draft things with which they're unfamiliar. And so that's the reason for that. The, the last two bullet points are setting a time limit. I think time limits are good, whether it's two hours, an hour and a half, three hours, but sticking to it is important, because it forces you to stay on task and get to the end. And then when you're looking at a two-hour time window, you then can appropriately decide, okay, well, for this two-hour meeting, we can really only handle this one section, because it's very complicated, it's got a lot of stuff. Or for this two-hour block, as I mentioned, we can cover three or four sections, because these next sections are pretty de minimis, and we may even finish early. And then last but not least is to include legal counsel, and that may seem self-evident, but a number of charter reviews, which I have participated in, the, the train has already left the tracks, in that they've done it without legal counsel, come up with an idea that I would have been able to say immediately is contrary to Florida law, unconstitutional or whatever, and it gets a lot of momentum, both on the committee, but also in the community at large, before they realize that somebody's gotta pump the brakes. And when that person happens to be me, that is an unpleasant situation, because, as I say to anybody who ever hires me, I've never been elected to anything. That's your role, or appointed officials, I've never appointed. It's not my job to stand in the way of the speeding train, it's simply to keep the train on the tracks. And so for that reason, having me in person, as opposed to consulting me after the fact, is probably the better way to go. So like I say, I've had experiences with all of these things that went the other way, and it's why I've concluded with these bullet points is what I think is the most workable and best way. But I am open to answer any questions, and at the end of the day, it's your process, because I've done it all manner of ways. I don't object, but I was asked for my recommendation, and so here it is.
So we, we welcome any questions. The, the question on the table is whether a city council wants us to just proceed with the way that Cliff, Mike, and I suggest and recommend as part of this memo tonight.
And I see the firsthand raised is by Counselor Jansen.
Hey, Cliff. Good evening, first off, and thank you for the work that you've done so far. So have you had a chance to review our charter at all, or just kind of take a superficial overlook at it, or?
Very superficial, in that I was able to count to 11. And, and I did that for the idea of, okay, I wonder how many sections we would have to split up amongst whatever number of meetings you all come up as, as appropriate. But because I have zero knowledge of the politics or sensitive issues in the community or what may have been a problem in the past, I could have done it, but it would have just been billing for the sake of billing, without really being, having, having any guide to go by.
Sure. Do you have, do you use some sort of template, or, as you've done so many, as, as your resume spoke for? Or do you take them on a one-on-one, one-on-one basis and look at them as independent from each other?
No. Definitely, you definitely, as a matter of law, you don't look at a charter section separate from the other sections, because if there's any conflict or potential conflict between sections on a given issue, you'll wanna see that, and you wanna resolve it, because how the law provides for that is that you have to read all sections together and try to read meaning into all of them, and it can be an impossible task if there's an obvious conflict. And it creates for whomever might decide it, the judge in the case, male or female, trying to figure out what is the intent. An example of this in the current charter review that I'm involved with, with one of my cities, the fact that the city of Maitland that I have a meeting for tonight at 6:30, is, is on how they want their term limits to work. As currently written, there's a different rule for the mayor as a separately elected position, even though they only serve, just like any other councilperson, than the term limits as applied to the non-mayor. And that's because of something that was overlooked when they put the thing together. Their intention at the time was, they were only thinking about the mayor, and for a lot of reasons that I won't get into, they really weren't pleased with the possibility of that particular mayor at that time coming back very quickly and running again. So they made a term limits provision that called out the mayor only, but didn't apply to any other council members, so that, as written, the mayor position, once vacated, you cannot run for essentially, effectively, two terms, two, two years of qualifying, whereas if you've been elected to council, you can arguably, if you resign just a little bit early before the end of your term, you could literally run in the next general election cycle, which is roughly a year later. Not what's the intended, and one of the things they intend to fix now with the charter view. But that's because they didn't read the sections together. The mayor section is one section, the council people is another section, and creates this conflict. So that's the way it goes. Now, as a general rule, and I know this from having looked at the portions of your charter that have already been amended by the public, one of the things we always look for in older charters, and even some of the newer ones, is trying to get, achieve gender neutrality. And that's not a political statement, it's just a practical one. So that was something that we would tell you to do regardless, but short of that, the issue specific to your community, you'd have to clue me in on it, and I try to help you with them.
Mayor Hoffman.
I, um, thank you for the succinct bullet points, because my first, you know, question mark was about why you opposed a separate citizen committee, but you explained it really well. Seems like a very well-organized and methodical process that we can work through each piece as we determine it, and I still have plenty of room for citizen comment as we work through it. Do you feel, I think if you just look at each section by section, you're looking at, at what's there, but you're not necessarily seeing what's not there. And I know you said that the what's missing would come from citizen input. Is that enough? I mean, is, does that, you feel like that would cover it, or do we need to be looking at other charters, other communities like ours?
It's an interesting proposition, because, you know, whether you're talking about things like went on in Orange County, the two most controversial things that, both of which ended up on only three ballots, after doing it for a year and a half, they only put three issues before the public, and their charter is substantially longer than yours. And those issues had nothing to do with the existing charter. One was preservation of an area called Split Oak Forest, which was a very large conservation area between Osceola and Orange County, and that one's now in litigation, because Osceola County didn't like the fact that we passed it. And so they're suing us, and I'm defending Orange County's position on that, it passed like by eighty-some-odd percent of the vote. Another one is this idea of natural rights for bodies of water, and having citizens be able to protect water bodies from pollution. And the third one has to do with initiative petitions. That's the one that actually had to do with something specific that was already in the charter, to try to make the petition gathering process a little bit easier and less onerous than it currently is. But none of the charter meaning from start to finish got reviewed in a methodical process. So I don't still know, even having served there now for over two years, whether there are things that should have been changed, because there was no process to look at them. Basically, each meeting was a brainstorming session. And so the, the answer to your question is, for most of the things that you might be thinking of, Mayor, those kinds of things are the kinds of things that ordinances are for, not charters for. You know how much legislation we have in this country, but we rarely have a constitutional amendment, and that's how you think of your charter. There, there are reasons to do it. It's a little bit easier in a charter than it is in the constitution, for obvious reasons, but, but actually, for a charter's concern, less is mostly more.
Thank you.
Would you like to talk to the state of govern, the state of Florida? They could really use that recommendation when it comes to amending the Florida Constitution.
Yes, I'm well familiar with the pregnant pigs legislation, and if you're not, that's why it now takes at least 60% to amend the Constitution.
We have any other questions from council? Does there appear to be consensus that you all like the proposal that was put forward as to how we should do Phase Two?
Yes.
Seeing heads nodding, and I see a majority of them. Chris and Cliff, I think that gives us the direction we were looking for tonight. Cliff, again, thank you for taking the time to present on this item tonight. Chris, did you want to do any wrap-up on it?
No, thank you. I got my direction, and I'll be in touch with Cliff in his office, and we'll get to work. And Cliff, good luck with Maitland.
Super. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Good, good luck tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Cliff.
Thanks, Cliff.
So the next, next item on our briefing for tonight is a review of legislative priorities. This is something that council has had requested a couple of months ago, that we have a discussion on. The memo that is provided to you actually has two attachments associated with it. The first is the Florida League of Cities 2021 Legislative Action Agenda, and the second is Northeast Florida Regional Council 21 Legislative Priorities. First, I'd like to speak a little bit about the Florida League of Cities 21 Legislative Action Agenda. You may recall that when we put together the Legislative Policies Manual, there is a resolution that actually dates back a number of years that talks about the fact that the council basically adopts the, the policy directions of the Florida League of City. So there really isn't too much that we need to do there, except maybe point out some of the ones that are more mission-critical to the city of Jack's Beach going forward. And then the second one is the Northeast Florida Regional Council Legislative Priorities, which if you read through that document, is really, from what I can tell, it's not something where maybe the city of Jacksonville Beach has been actively engaged in the past, and therefore, there are no initiatives or projects that are identified specific to our community, whereas there are for other areas such as St. Augustine and Brennandina Beach. In talking about the, the first one, the Florida League of Cities, you'll see on their summary sheet, there's actually five priorities and five policy positions. That's basically the number one and number two ranked items for each of the policy committees that Florida League puts together. This past year, both Counselor Golding and myself served on the Municipal Administration Committee, and we can tell you that the two that rose to the surface on that committee were the short-term vacation rentals and the cyber issue of cybersecurity. The, the ones that I wanted to point out that are a direct and immediate impact to the city are, in the priorities, short-term vacation rentals and the discharge to surface waters. Specifically for short-term rentals, you may have seen emails that have come out over the past few weeks, that this year, as in last year, there is legislation that would basically preempt local government from doing anything with regards to short-term vacation rentals, unless you had an ordinance that was in effect prior to 2011. Needless to say, the city of Jacksonville Beach's ordinance is only a couple of years old, and therefore, if this legislation were to pass, it would basically render that ordinance null and void with regards to our ability to license or inspect any of the short-term vacation rentals in our jurisdiction. The second one, which hasn't gotten as much fanfare, is the discharges to surface water. This is one where the state is looking to eliminate all surface water discharges by 2026. What that would mean for the city of Jacksonville Beach is that our currently shared discharge of effluent from our PCV, our pollution control plant, which currently is combined with Neptune Beach and Atlantic Beach and pumped to the north, and discharges near Mayport, would effectively have to be decommissioned and go away. And we would need to find alternative means of disposing of our treatment plant effluent. We do discharge a portion of it to the golf course for use on irrigation for the course, but chances are that would probably be too much water for the course to handle, and therefore, we would have to look at alternatives, and those alternatives would cost money. There is currently a push by multiple agencies across the state to amend the language so that those agencies that are not creating environmental impacts do not necessarily have to eliminate their surface water discharge, but we're unsure as to where this legislation's going to go and how it would impact us. Those are the, the two big ones from Florida League of City that I wanted to point out. The other ones, hopefully, you were able to read through the backgrounds and see how those may or may not affect us. With regards to the Northeast Florida Regional Council, again, you can see that there are a listing of priorities that are provided that affect both counties and municipal jurisdictions that are around us. Basically, it's from Flagler and Putnam County to the south, all the way up to Nassau and Baker to the north, and everything in between. I do not know if we have any council members who participate in that, in that council, or whether this is something that you want to initiate for next year, having some representation and seeing if it's of any benefit to be in partnership with them. At this point, though, I'd open it up to discussion to see if council has any comments on any of the legislative priorities that are out there, or the positions of Florida League of Cities, or whether or not there's anything that the city should be advocating on behalf of that's not already listed. And the firsthand that I see raised is Counselor Dumont, followed by Counselor Golding.
Thank you, Mike. I'm looking at the Northeast Florida Regional Council one, and when I read through it the first time, it doesn't look like Duval County is overly involved. The, the mayor of Baldwin's involved, but you'd think that of all of the areas in Duval County, there would be more involvement to be able to try and leverage this resource at the state level. So I think it would be good for the city to have, to be engaged with this organization somehow in the future.
Counselor Golding.
Thank you, Mike. So there's a couple of other pieces of legislation that are, that have been introduced that, and they're not part of the legislative priorities for the Florida League of Cities, but I don't know if it's something that we, as a council, would want to consider taking a position on, but home-based businesses is some legislation that could negatively impact our neighborhoods. And then also, there's smoking in public parks that's been introduced, and that was one that, Michael, Mike can back me up on this. This came up under the Municipal Administration Committee, and we were discussing that as well, and there was a lot of discussion about it, and there does appear to be, at least in that policy committee, there was, there was a lot of interest in it, but the vacation rentals definitely rose to the top again this year, because it's, it's also a very big issue. So I don't know if we, as a council, would like, and Mike, is this, is this something that you were wanting to know, if there's other issues that we would want to try to, you know, take a position on as a council? And then the other thing I wanted to ask is, as a council, would we also, because I know Neptune Beach just recently passed a resolution in opposition to the two bills that are proposed for the vacation rentals, which is House Bill 219 and Senate Bill 522, and they passed a resolution in opposition to those, so that that could be sent to the legislature and to the various committees that will be hearing those bills, and let them know that the city of Neptune Beach does not support that legislation. And I believe in the pre-legislation call that the League of Cities had the other day, there was some mention that some other cities had done the same. So I, I wanted to mention that perhaps as, as a city council, we consider a resolution in opposition like what Neptune Beach has done.
Thank you, Counselor. And to the payoff of that, before we go to the mayor, just so everyone's familiar, the, the issue of home office of convenience, or the home office that Counselor Golding was speaking to, it would basically be legislation that allows home offices by right. And the way it's written is very loose, which means one could interpret it that people not only can have their home office, but they can actually conduct business out of their property, even if the business might not be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood or neighboring properties. The other items is that there have been a couple of letters that we have sent in so far, that the mayor has signed off on, and I believe we've copied the rest of council on those letters as they've gone out the door. But in particular, we did send one in support of being able to restrict smoking in parks. And I know I've provided comments to a committee regarding license plate readers, which is a separate issue, and I can't recall, Mayor, if we did one on short-term vacation rentals or not, other than really hammer it home with our two local legislators, Representative Byrd and Senator Bean, when we had a meeting with them a couple of weeks back.
We, we did send a letter to Representatives Yarborough, Fisher, and Byrd. We got a response from Yarborough that was just the standard, thank you for your letter type of thing. But yeah, so I, I think that for our part to, as we react and respond, and normally that's at the behest of the Florida League of Cities, that we copy you guys all on that, so you can see what we're kind of actively providing input on, so that you can either follow suit, or just, just for your general awareness, which is not, not really something that has been provided to the council in the past, at least not in my experience.
Mayor, did you have anything else you wanted to touch on?
I did. Going back to the Northeast Florida Regional Council, I did participate in their Leadership Academy. I don't know if Georgette or Sandy, have you done that? Okay, so, but I'm not active with them beyond being an alumnus, but Duval County or Jacksonville pulled their funding at, at one point, and I, I think they went back to it, but they've been, they, they have somewhat of a reputation for not really participating in organizations like that, including the League of Cities. I think they have a board seat for being the largest city that is, is a vacant seat. So, so that, you know, that's Jacksonville's issue, but just in, in terms of how it relates to us. Then I also wanted to say that Margot Mooreing, who is on the Planning Commission, at least at the time I went through the Leadership Academy, works for the Northeast Florida Regional Council, so she may be a good resource to talk to. She may be a good resource to talk to as a Jacksonville Beach resident. I don't know that we necessarily need to adopt these priorities this year because they're pretty pretty broad. And most of the specifics impact other areas that that don't really touch us. So I think it's something we should. Evaluate to see if it's something we should be more actively involved in, but for this year, I don't really see us needing to do that.
Any other comments, thoughts or questions from council? Councillor Golden.
Can I get some feedback from the rest of the council with regard to a resolution? By the council on in opposition to the short term vacation rental bills?
Does council think that would be a good idea to adopt a resolution in opposition? I know the city attorney stood the line, so if I see heads nod, he knows he needs to prepare one.
Yeah, I believe we did last year, didn't we? Year before, maybe?
I'm not aware that we did an, I'm not, I'm not aware that we did a resolution last year, but. I know I've read, I, last year I wrote a lot of letters and talked to legislators, but I don't recall that we passed a resolution.
Okay, I wouldn't be against it. It wouldn't be, there would be no harm. We, it would be harmful for us if this were to pass. So I think anything that we could do to note our. Stance on these bills would be helpful, or at least to provide. Our representatives over in Tallahassee some cover as to why they may not have supported those bills.
I'm in support of it.
We support the resolution, not the the short term rental bill, right?
We don't have a resolution from last year on the topic.
So Chris, if you can, if you can get up to him with Zach. And see if we can get a copy of their resolution and we can tailor it to the city of Jack's Beach and. Bring it back for council consideration.
And I know we have sent it to Representative Fisher and others in the past. We really just need to get it. And get it in front of as many people as we can in Tallahassee. I mean, I think, you know. We just, we need to get it out there.
Councillor Golden, back to you.
I I would just ask that, I mean, I don't know if any of the other council members are familiar with it, but the home based business. Bills I think are are both really important. I'd ask that you look at those and maybe read the League of Cities information and perhaps. I don't know if anybody has called in or called into the the pre legislate, pre legislative session call that was. Held by the League of Cities on Thursday. But if you could at least familiarize yourself with it, I I think that's another one that we would probably want to do a resolution. In opposition to as well. And and then also, that's another one like Cory was saying that. If you have any contacts in the legislature, you need to start reaching out to them if you know them well, and even the ones you don't know well, if you can start. Reaching out to the committees that these bills are going to, the more the more of us they hear from, the better.
And just so the, just so the council is aware, I'm actually on what's called a Practitioners Committee. Which is made up of a series of city managers and some deputy city managers from across the state. That are involved with the municipal administration committee as well as a few others. And we have a standing call either weekly or bi weekly, I think it's bi weekly. Where we actually take a look at the proposed legislation that's coming up. And we provide feedback with which ultimately goes from our committee back to the Florida League. Which is occasionally developed into some talking points. But we kind of straw man each of the legislative proposals and point out where the deficiencies or weaknesses are. And give us at least a a talking platform for when we do approach elected officials to let them know. Areas of legislation are too vague or too specific or don't really address the problem because of how it's written. So would you all like to see two resolutions, one for S, one for short term vacations and one for the home offices? Or did you want an opportunity to review the H, the HOC first?
I'd like an opportunity to review it first.
Yeah, I would like to review the home office as well. I'm not, I don't have the specific details.
Okay. Why not each take a look at it, but at least Chris can start working on the first resolution. And we'll get that to you as quickly as possible. Councillor Stokes.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I put a couple of calls into some legislators in Tallahassee that. I know on the short term vacation rentals and whatever all of us can do, I think that's important. So I support that resolution and I'll. Look into the home based businesses one so we can have a clear decisive there, but really kind of wanted to. Pop back to the FLC and the NEFRC. I. Support any opportunity for us to get some representation on on those bodies. The NEFRC was was obviously with with City of Jacksonville, not putting anybody on there. It's a pretty good opportunity for us at the beaches to maybe get. A little representation there. On on some other council that just kind of gets our issues outside of. The little local sphere here. So any way we can, if there's any opportunities. Come up, I'd love to, love to see them from the city and. Hopefully, one of us can get involved in one of these two councils and. Get a little bit more exposure.
Is there an interest from council to serve on any of the FLC policy committees? Such as councillor Golden did this past year with municipal administration? I see councillor.
I'm interested.
Yeah, I'd be interested to know what's available, at least see what opportunities are out there for us to, you know, further our our reach.
Okay. That's probably something the mayor and I'll talk a little bit about offline with regards to how that would work. There's currently five policy committees. So obviously, there's, there's a lot of communities around the state that have multiple elected officials that serve. On each of the policy committees. But they definitely go in there with a. They go in there with the intent of bringing information back to their council. Sharing it, make sure that they're on the same page before they take their final votes as they get to the end of their policy committee sessions. So that way, individual council members aren't necessarily going in the opposite direction. Given the fact that the resolution's in place that we adopt the FLC by default. That's actually a good thing because it means that we're not taking a position that's contrary to the Florida League and what they're establishing. So any other questions or comments? I think we've got some pretty good direction here on prepping a resolution for short term vacation rental. We'll try to get you some information regarding the home based businesses for you to start taking a look at. And probably in about six or eight months or six months or so, we'll bring this whole topic back to see about. Possible other committee assignments or. Positions for the city as we go in. It's not uncommon as well for Florida League to ask for criteria or to ask for topics. That could become a priority for the upcoming season. This year, obviously, the short term vacation rentals is is a perennial one on municipal administration. But you'd be surprised at the topics that they discuss on some of the other four committees. It's everything from the tax fairness that you see, which is making sure to collect the appropriate internet sales tax. To the environmental impact such as water quality and water effluent from different facilities. So if there's no other comments on this topic, I think we've got our pretty good direction at this end. And seeing no hands raised, we'll wrap up item number two. And we will move on to title, topic number three. Which was a council requested item that we discussed the processes. That the council currently has with regards to how they operate. We provided to you some additional information with this particular topic. In particular, we made reference to the Legislative Policies Manual, which you should all have a link to on the city's website. And also provided some explicit sections of the city council as well. The city charter as well as the code of ordinances. So there are some bullet points that were provided here for you for things that you might want to consider talking about. And that's everything from the dates and times of regular meetings. The order of business or the sequence of events as they occur at our specific council meetings. And some of the other policies and procedures associated with celebratory. Or recognition type awards that are done by council. So I'm not really sure where the appropriate starting point is with regards to this conversation. Mayor, if there's anything you wanted to talk about a little bit first to kick it off. I know that one of the things we provided for everyone is the fact that the the mayor is treated a little bit differently. With regards to charter language. And also with the fact that the mayor is called out as the the head of the council. As well as the person who is responsible for all of the recognition or celebratory type issues that are done by the city. So if you wanted to say a few words to kick this off.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. I think that just to kind of go through a few things that I noticed in this packet, in terms of the city charter. The only place that gender is recognized specifically as he is under mayor, everywhere else it's he, she. So that is certainly something. We need to, at the very least, be consistent on. Recently, discussion, we had a lot of media attention in town with all of the openings and announcements and everything like that and. Was always kind of understood that media calls go to the mayor and or the city manager and and Mike and I have actually discussed a process for handling those, but it's not stated anywhere. That the mayor and or the city city manager would be the official spokespeople for the city. So. I think that is something that we need to, I'd like to hear your feedback on that. Certainly not, it doesn't mean you can't speak to the media, but in terms of. The official spokespeople for the our local news media that it would be us, that particularly comes into play. In emergencies. So when there's hurricanes, COVID, things like that. When I was a council member, I would get media calls, but I would bounce them straight to Charlie and or Mayor Latham and George at the time. Sometimes they would bounce back just depending on what the issue is. So I think we need to think about how to specify that. And then the other item is on the proclamations and the wave maker awards. For the new members, the wave maker award is something that Mary Latham came up with and that I'm interested in continuing, although. Planning on modifying it a little bit just in terms of what the award is. Using a photo of an actual Jacksonville Beach wave. Versus the the clear acrylic type of award. And then proclamations in the past, if I was approached by a group about a proclamation, I would normally just again, send it to. The mayor and city council to determine if they wanted to do that. So I'm I'm open to suggestions on wave makers and proclamations coming from from any council member. And then, you know, moving forward with that accordingly. I'd also like to kind of internally clean up the the look and feel of the proclamations. They look a little dated like our business cards. We went from those the off white. Brown kind of look to a nice colorful, a little more representative business card. And I'd like to do the same thing with the the proclamations. And do them in house. They were previously being framed professionally so to to cut the cost down on those so that we don't. Feel limited in that way that we can use that proclamation process when we want to. So I covered a lot, but welcome, welcome your feedback and thoughts on any of those items. Okay, great. That was easy.
Councillor Jansen, followed by councillor Golden.
So when it comes to speaking to the media, I just, I I think that's a very ambiguous term. Now, are we talking? When we're, as elected officials, we we have to be able to reach out to our constituents. And I think that we should be able to reach out to them by whatever process is necessary. Whether it's social media, whether it's the news outlets, whether it's any kind of, you know, printed publication or what have you. There's a distinct line to me when it comes to saying you're speaking on behalf of the city versus speaking on behalf as a of a representative as a council member. And that's, that's my only position as far as the media is concerned.
Councillor Golden.
You know, I think I'm used to what what's been done in the past, and that is passing. Passing media requests off to the city manager and and the. And the mayor. I mean, I I don't mind talking to the media, but I guess I. I tend to want to be a little careful about saying something that may be perceived as the position of the council as a whole when. You know, I'm just a single council person. So that's why I do feel a little more comfortable handing things off to the mayor. So that's just, that's my personal feeling about it. Because I do think that people do perceive the comments as being. Related to the position of the council. So that's, that's just my, that's my feeling on it. I have some comments that I want to make too, but I'll, I can make my comments with regard to these processes and stuff. After we've finished discussing the things that Chris brought up.
Councillor Dumont, followed by councillor Maza.
Thank you. I agree with Sandy. I'm comfortable with the way that we have done it in the past with the city manager and the mayor. Speaking on behalf of the city, it makes sure that the lines of communication stay clear and also. They're in constant communication all week long, so they are far more knowledgeable about. Some of the intricacies of the issues. Now, I can. I I understand Dan's perspective on wanting to reach out to your constituents, but I don't think that we need to go to the major news outlets to be able to do so. So I like, these are like the TV stations and the Times Union and such. You know, just on social media as yourself, that that's not perceived as you speaking on behalf of the city. That's on your own social media. Network, but I like the the continuity and message. I also have a fear of grandstanding, not necessarily with this council, but with future councils. Where if you have, let's say, say hypothetically, lines get redrawn. And now you have two sitting council members running against each other in the in a race, and I could see that. They could be stepping on each other to. At and at the, to the detriment of the city, trying to get their own positions out. So I am more comfortable with it being streamlined as one voice when it comes to speaking on behalf of the city. Or when it's perceived that you're speaking on behalf of the city. If it's social media, things like that, you know, you're you, you're your representative, you you represent the people that you represent. We all have our things, but. I'm just weary of all of us starting to speak on behalf of the city.
Councillor Maza, followed by councillor Stokes.
Fernando, you're on mute.
Okay, no, I agree with councillor Dan to an extent, as well with councillor Dumont, Golden and Mayor Hoffman. The news outlets, just as how Mayor was saying, they reach out to her before I was elected during COVID, the news were always reaching out to me, but I was speaking as a person. I was just on TV on the news a couple of weeks ago. And the question that I asked the reporter is, do you want me to speak as business owner at downtown or as a council member? And she said both. I just said that I can only speak as a business owner and I don't know the procedures of. You know, dealing with the news and and now that I know, I guess I'll just send it to to you, to the manager and to the mayor. I'm sure in the future. There will be some issues that I would probably like to say something if it involves the central business district area. But I guess we will cross that bridge once, once, once we get there. But it will be nice to talk to the people sometimes, not. Grandstanding, but you know, getting involved with the community and letting them know that we're here representing them. That's it.
Councillor Stokes, followed by councillor Nichols.
Well, I guess I'm gonna have to cancel that big interview I had with CNN plan. But all kidding aside. You know, I completely agree that if it's a city issue, it it needs to be deferred. To our mayor and city manager so that they have the proper information to talk about the issue. You know, I I think Mayor Hoffman, you did a great job on the recent interviews. So you've represented our city very well and will continue to do so. And. I'm do not want to be talking to the media about Margaritaville. I'd rather, much rather that be our mayor and and city manager. And also just. And also just, I think it, it makes the lines clear because we do have in our ethics that we don't take our public opinions if we disagree on a vote or an issue to the media. And so I think if there's one singular voice going out there, it keeps that very clear. So, um, yeah, support that.
Counselor Nichols.
I'm completely fine with, with Mayor Hoffman and, and city manager. Mike, were you guys taking the lead on this? But I do, but I mean, I also don't have a problem with Fernando as a business owner. If he's asked to be on, if he asked, asked about something related to his business, I don't really come with him doing that as long as it's not a, a city, if he's not coming from a city perspective, he's coming from a business owner. You know, I get asked for engineering stuff, I, I decline. I just assume not do it, but I think Chris does a fantastic, I'm sorry, Mayor Hoffman, Hoffman does a fantastic job with the media. And I, I feel completely fine with her taking the lead on all that and pushing every request to her.
Okay. Is this something that you would like us to work up a new segment for the legislative policies manual or an amendment to the LPM? I'm seeing heads nod. Okay. We will do the LPM for that. Did any of the council have any comments or questions with regards to Mayor Hoffman's proposal about cleaning up the proclamations and/or the wave maker award? And I see Counselor Maza, or actually, nope, Counselor Nichols has his hand raised.
I, I agree with her. I don't think we need a, to pay for actual award. I think something printed and nice is, is fine. I don't know, is there any kind of, what is it? Trademark or anything that, anybody take a trademark on the wave maker thing from people that developed it? Do we need to rename it? Or just want to make sure that we're not going to get sued by whoever developed it? But I, but I do think that it's, I, I mean, I do think for the people that are really doing stuff for the public, and as long as it's not used politically to, to give it to friends or people that have politically supported you, I think it's fine. I think that that's, I could see that being a problem.
I just wanted to follow up on Cory's thing. I think it was Curtis Loftus who did the design of that. I don't know if he trademarked it. I know Deck the Chairs is trademarked, but I don't know what that is. So you just might want to check with Curtis just to be on the safe side to make sure it's not. And if it is, it's
Thank you.
or whatnot.
Counselor Golding.
So for clarification with the wave maker award, is that something that we as council people, we could make recommendations to the mayor for a wave maker recipient? Or is that strictly something that would just be the mayor's authority and responsibility?
I, I, I welcome recommendations from the council. So I, I'm certainly open to that.
And so in that, in that case is, if there's anything we might want to add to the legislative policy manual, just to maybe make it clear that council members could make, can make recommendations or whatever that might be, might be good to add.
I'm not sure who's next, but in the, in the past, it did say it was from the mayor and city council. And I think, you know, we need to be in agreement of who we're gonna get, who we're giving it to. If, if it is just Mayor Hoffman, then I think I should just say from the mayor. But if it has come before council and we want to all agree on it for a specific person, then I believe that at that time I should say from the mayor and city council.
That's a, that's a, that's a good question. Would council be okay with the mayor and I working up maybe a draft proposal for how the wave maker award would actually be awarded?
That would be good.
Let's see, that's nodding. Okay, Mayor, you and I have a project.
Oh, good. And I think honestly, um, Cory, I think one of the challenges that we ran into wasn't necessarily with the wave maker award, but was with the resolution or proclamation that came with it. And the wording that did include city council, but city council did not have anything to do with that awarding. And it became a little bit of a firestorm. So I, I don't think, yeah, I mean, if I give an award and it has my, you know, it's me, that's one thing, that, that's a decision that I can make. But if, if it says city council, then I totally agree that you guys should have some sign off on that. And that doesn't necessarily have to be anything formal, but at least a consensus that the city council supports it.
And Mayor, you-
While we're here, I will say that I am awarding a wave maker award to Beaches Go Green. So any objections? I feel like that's going to be a hard one to argue with, but feel free if you have any concerns.
I saw on Facebook that they already got it. So I think it's a little late, it's a little late to take it back now.
Already get it, but we, we had to jump the gun for their River City Live. I tried to do it this week to let them promote it this week after we had this conversation. But again, I figured this was a safe one. This was probably non-concurrenzial, so I went ahead and did it.
Did you give it to the organization or did you give it to the individuals?
To the organization. I haven't given anything to them. There's, there will still be a
No, I understand, but it is to an organization, not to a, okay.
Yeah.
And if, if council's okay, I think when the mayor and I talk about the process for award of that, we could probably also talk about and create a draft policy with regards to the proclamation process. I can tell you right now that if we wanted to put three proclamations on every agenda for every meeting during the course of the year, we could figure out how to do it. Everything from telecommunications week to linemen's week to public safety week. Obviously, you could also do recognition of individuals within the community. But right now, there is no process and there is no rhyme or reason to how it's actually conducted. Sometimes it's just, you know, I'll be talking with the public works director and he'll say, oh, by the way, it's a clean water week. Okay, let's do a proclamation for clean water week. And you get all of the language from AWWA or other agencies. So it would be good if we had some standards for that as well, not just the nonprofit side, so to speak, where we're talking about agency recognitions, but also where we're looking to do a resolution to, to thank a group for something they've done within the community of Jacksonville Beach.
I think there's many resolutions that could very easily be a social media post.
There you go. So Mayor and I will talk about that one too, see if we can draft something that we would bring back for everyone to consider. Councilmember Golding.
Is this a good time to bring up some other things that I'd like to bring up with regard to our processes?
I think so. I think we're, if I see from odds, are we done with the awards and the?
I just have one more comment. Just, can we kind of reduce the verbiage on some of the proclamations, especially if we're getting multiple ones? Come up with something that's a little, a little more condensed. Do you know, I can read them.
So my yada, yada, yada wasn't working for you?
No, I like that, that's completely fine. I just don't, we've read them over and over again. And I'd wrap, you know, time is, time is valuable.
I think we can accommodate that.
Okay, so I have a few things, maybe the first one to start with has to do with council agenda documents that we receive. Mike and I talked about this and it, if you think about the, when we receive ordinances that we're working on, and you know, we have several iterations and like with the chapter five changes that we've been looking at for the last several months. I'd like to ask that we have, or that the council, does the council support an expectation that we receive a version of the, of the ordinance or whatever it is with some kind of markup so that we can tell what has changed between the last time we saw the document? So for example, with chapter five, like what, like what I sent to Mike and then he shared to the rest of the council. It, it, you know, chapter five, of course, was a complete rewrite. So initially, it's going to be like, everything's underlined because it's totally new. But then when we have a change from, say, one briefing to the next, and we're gonna, we're gonna be looking at a new revision. I'd, I'd like to see that we get a markup that just shows the changes that were made since the last time we looked at the document. Because, for example, with chapter five, I was trying to figure out what had changed and, and what hadn't, or, and it was really hard to do. And so I actually did a word comparison between the two versions and it made it a lot easier because I could see what was in blue, were the things that have been added or deleted or whatever. And so when I talked to Mike about it, Mike said that, you know, he, he would like to get direction from the council as to whether this is something that everybody would like to see.
Counselor Dumont.
Thank you. I agree with that because when I get these changes, I end up opening two Word documents and I do a file merge so I can see what shifted from one to the other. And I don't know if everybody does that, but the end goal should be us having the information we need to be able to make good decisions. If we can get that information quicker without having to do the merges and all that, that would be very time, time-saving for those of us who are trying to figure out what changes were made.
And might I add too, for the benefit of the citizens as well, because that's something that, you know, I think it, it would be, you know, if a citizen looks at it, they may not be able to tell very easily and they may not have the ability to do that comparison that we're doing. So it'd be nice for citizens to be able to see, here's what's changed.
Counselor Maza.
I agree. I would like to have a comparison side by side. And also I know in the future, I'm sure there's going to be some hot topic issues and having information in advance would be great. That's it.
Counselor Stokes.
I think it's great whether do that or like a bullet point of changes. I, my only concern, Mike, is, is the detriment on staff time to, to do this. Is that a very, gonna cost the staff a lot of time that may take them? Or is it, is it just showing us a red line document, bullet points? What would be the most efficient use of staff time?
Well, we, we have the city attorney here. So if the city attorney wants to weigh in with how much time it would take him to do strike through and underline every time we present, present a version, you can certainly weigh in with it.
Sure. It will take a lot of time, but we can do it depending on the size of the ordinance. And I say it takes a lot of time because I don't do all the drafting myself, but I am central control of all ordinances and resolutions. But for the ordinances, you know, I'd say that I draft 70 to 80% of it myself for most ordinances and then gets, have staff contribute the other 30 to 20%. The exceptions are very large overhaul, total revision of chapters that apply to a department. So for example, animal code, that of course, the animal control officers deserve a lot of credit for 50% or more of the writing of that ordinance. Another example is the fire marshal and I worked very closely on revising the fire marshal's chapter. And there were many other projects that we worked on that perhaps with other departments that perhaps weren't complete overhauls of an entire chapter. But any revision of a full chapter for a department, that'll take a lot of staff time to put together the red line. Because in the work, in the working progress of that project, we, we have so many versions in the behind the scenes activity of drafts and just certain pages. So if an ordinance, for example, is going to end up taking us 15 pages, we'll work on page number seven and nine in a set of emails. And then, you know, I'll receive something from the staff member and then I'll cut and paste and bring it in. So it's a big working project, but Elise and I will put our heads together, we'll figure out how to get a red line copy to all council members. So it shows the changes of what the current ordinance is and what the red line version and proposed changes are. But Counselor Stokes, I would suggest that, well, to all council members, we can definitely provide you the red line version. But I'm hesitant to include on, well, I'll take city council's direction on how to do this, but for an agenda item, the agenda item, of course, is seeking approval, you know, typically seeking approval by city council for a particular ordinance and then setting that ordinance for a second reading. We can attach the red line version to that as well, but Mike has had established a good policy where he's trying to minimize the number of documents that are attached to the public agenda. Of course, not for reasons of not wanting to disclose it to the public, but for reasons of trying to keep the agenda relatively smaller. So I, I just was getting some input, would like to get some input from the council members. You know, when we have very large rewrites, you would end up seeing an entire red line version, which is exceptionally long because it's double. And then the clean version, which is what we're seeking for approval, that ultimately the mayor would sign, the clerk would attest to, and which would be, you know, honestly, a set up to MUNI code. And that would be the codified law on the books. So as long as council is, is giving me the direction to include both with your, with your agenda, your agenda memo, then your, your documents, your agenda memo is going to be much longer. But I'd be glad to do that if that, if that's okay with council. Chris, just to follow up and also for councilmember Golding, if this, it would work, it would, uh, bullet points be, what, kind of like what we got today on the charter review, would something like that be less time consuming, same amount? Or in, would that, you know, even help? That kind of goes to Counselor Golding and, but just, you know, from a staff perspective, would that help or not? It would help with staff time and this, in the efficiency of staff time for smaller ordinances. But the, the larger ones, it would actually serve council better if you saw the red line because that takes more, the, a long developed revision and rewrite, a, a red line really helps council see it. I wouldn't do it, I wouldn't be able to do it proper justice for you in a bullet point because I'd only be giving you bits and pieces in a snapshot. But with a true red line, Counselor Stokes, you would get to be able to see them side by side or just take up, take the red line. And every word from the ordinance that's being changed, would, you'll be able to read it. So, but I appreciate that suggestion, but to, to serve you better, I would suggest a red line version. Based, based on that, I would suggest the, the red line for, my personal, the red line for the big ones and the bullet points for the, the short ones. And that, that would be, that would be my suggestion and, um. So just to advise council, we, on the March 1st meeting, we have two ordinances that are going to be placed before you. Ordinance on the ILA CRA TIF reduction refund. And, and a notice, the false claims and fraudulent claims ordinance that I've drafted to help protect the city better. I don't have red line versions of either of those for the March 1st. But the ordinance on the TIF actually wouldn't, wouldn't be an ordinance that takes sections of the existing code. That's an ordinance as part of the step that we're doing to initiate the ILA, interlocal agreement. So I drafted that as a procedural step. City council would approve the ordinance and therefore the adopt, and adopt and approve the ILA that is part of the ordinance. So I won't have a red line version for you on that. That's a straightforward draft ordinance. And I don't have a red line version of the notice of false claims. That's a topic that I've created for you and you'll see that in your agenda to help with finance. with finance and purchasing and procurement fraudulent claims and false claims and also procedures to, um, that claimants must follow if they want to bring a lawsuit against us. I don't have a red line version of that, but if it's okay with council, uh, because that's again, that's a brand new thing for us. But if it's okay with council, after March first, we can have the red line versions. Like I'm checking my board by the way, to make sure I'm not missing anything. But I will have red line versions for you. And then if council so directs on the smaller ordinances, I can provide a bullet point. We can do whatever you want.
Hey, Chris, I, I mean, I, I would think that why not just be consistent and do the red line for the smaller ordinances too? To me, it just seems like consistency would be, would be important. And then the other comment I wanted to make is that, you know, I was thinking about the fact that you, you know, you do have in, in the case of chapter five, y- you've got the animal control officers helping with that legislation. And so I would think it would have, would be helpful for you too, to be able to see what has changed. So if you, you know, if the red line version is generated, um, I, I mean, because it really helped me a lot when I did the two document comparisons, but it, in all honesty, what took, what took the most effort for me was to take both of the PDF documents, convert each PDF document to a Word document. And then once I did that, then I was able to do the comparison in Word and it generated that, that red line version, but it was actually blue. It put everything that was different in blue. So that didn't take much time at all and, um, but it, my thinking is that it would be nice to have that and then for the citizens to be able to see that too, when they're looking at the, at, you know, at the packet when they pull it up. And likewise, it would be good for you to be able to see that as well if somebody else is working on, on the, uh, on the legislation.
Sure. And I don't want to get off topic too much and I don't want to take too much time with council on the briefing, but I appreciate Councilwoman Golding. But just to give council an idea of how the, how a large ordinance develops, just so very quickly, I do all the legal research related to what our, what the present condition is of our ordinance, the changes that are needed and then research any suggestions from any governing bodies or other local governments that may have taken the lead on that particular topic or just other, other background experience that I have. So I started to put it together. Then I have several meetings with the relevant department. And sometimes there's not, not necessarily a relevant department, but I will craft the whole, the whole document and then run it by whichever departments it's most relevant to and get their input. So that often will include three or four different conferences with different departments and instances of the animal code. That, that, that is such a, such a developed project that, that results in multiple conferences. And, and, and part of it is that we just can't meet all day long because we're all being pulled in a million directions. So we'll just, we can only fit in an hour here, an hour there. So it ends up taking several weeks or sometimes a month or two for us to be able to get our schedules coordinated, bring to the table all the portions that we each have worked on or any contributions or any further research. So you, it's a, there's a big mechanism involved in getting to that ordinance. I had a business owner, local business owner ask me or say to me, how hard is it to draft an ordinance? Just draft it. And after I laughed for five minutes, I, uh, I said, yeah, I'll just draft it. I'll have it ready for you, but it's not like just draft it. But we will, we, we will absolutely come up with a way, a method to put that work into a red line version. There's no problem. There's no problem. And I'm just, I'm, I'm seeing that it's going to benefit us all, the staff in my office. So we're going to, we're going to make it happen. And, um, and, and, you know, just keep in mind that there will be ordinances that I won't have a red line version on because they may be brand new, you know? And in my opinion, there are needs in our code of ordinances that of, of particular matters and topics that aren't covered. For example, the false claims and you'll see that coming in the next few weeks. So I create an ordinance. It's just brand new and I'm not redlining or changing anything. So there will be times that that doesn't, a red line doesn't exist, but absolutely we can do a red line. We will. Just not March first.
Chris and Counselor Golding, you both have your hands raised, but I don't know if it's for this topic or something different.
I had something else I wanted, had some other things I wanted to add. So I had a question and I think this is something that maybe, maybe this should be in our legislative policies manual, but I know in the past, we've had city council member, we've had a city council member miss a city council meeting and, you know, I would, I, I asked Mike, you know, did you know that that council member wasn't going to be at the meeting and Mike didn't know? So should we have something in place that says if a council member is going to miss a meeting, they need to contact this person? Should it be the city clerk? Should it be the city manager? You know, but I just feel like some, perhaps something needs to be in place because for Mike, for the city manager not to know that somebody wasn't going to be there or, you know, for all of the council actually to kind of be going, oh, and, and then, then you get into the concern too, you know, are you going to have a quorum if you've got several people that are going to be missing? So, but I'd like to see us look at perhaps putting something maybe in our policies that say that we'll notify whomever if we're not going to be there and, and identify who that appropriate person would be. I have some other comments too, but I can, I mean, and I, maybe I should just list these others off real quick. What was brought up earlier that Mike mentioned about if we are going to represent or if we're going to be on a committee or something, um, I'd like to get some clarification too about how, how we want to plan to do those updates on, like for example, when I was on the municipal administration committee, do we want to have, put that, put something in the policies that say that if you represent on a, on a committee that, that we need to make sure we schedule some time in a briefing for an update or, or that sort of thing. So to make sure that, and, and for example too, I think that there's going to be, I think Mayor Hoffman mentioned that she's starting a hospitality business meeting on a regular basis. Is there some way that we can, you know, make sure that there's updates on those too so that the rest of the council members know what's been discussed and we know what the concerns are, the issues are with the downtown businesses? But maybe there's, we need to have something that tells us how we need to come back to the council with that information and how we need to either get it on a briefing, uh, agenda or whatever. And then also, uh, another thing I had was requesting to discuss a topic in a briefing too, how we want to, is that something that, do we want to have an opportunity, say at the end of a council meeting? Because this was something we had touched on in the previous two years that, hey, do we want to have some time at the end of a council meeting to have some additional discussion? Maybe it's additional discussion based off something that was brought up in courtesy of floor to the visitors and maybe the council might want to say, you know, that's a really good topic about the balloons, you know, a balloon ordinance. Can we plan to put that on a briefing agenda or whatever? Do we want to consider doing something like that, having some time at the end of the council meeting for some additional council discussion on new topics that we would like to broach with the council? Or if we have new topics that we want to broach with the council, what's the process for getting that onto a briefing agenda? And is that something that we can put in our policies manual as well? So those are my, those are my items, my other items that I wanted to bring before the council.
Lots from other council members. Mayor Hoffman.
I think in terms of attendance, um, we're all adults and I would say as a courtesy to the city manager, if you can't make a meeting, you let them know. I don't feel like that needs to be a policy specifically. But I do agree if, especially if there's the threat of, of not reaching a quorum, which I don't think we've had that in my eight years on council. So I don't foresee that with this group, but I think it is nice to know if someone's going to be absent. Um, I, my intention in terms of people taking on representative roles with different committees and things like that is to have some time at briefings where we can do a quick round robin for any updates. There may be no updates, there may be a couple. So that's something that I would think we can just, I don't think that needs to be a matter of policy, but we can make that a matter of practice very easily. And I, and I agree that we should do that. Opening up a city council, the end of a city council meeting, we've, we've kind of tried that and kind of didn't go great. So I would really rather bake in time at briefings to have some more of that open discussion about, about policies and constituent comments and things like that. So we just, we just need to start doing it. We've talked about it again. I don't necessarily think that needs to be policy and maybe we kind of keep trying approaches. And if something works, then maybe we can codify it into a policy. But at this point, I think we've, we can't, I don't see us putting it back on the council, especially when we're addressing courtesy of the floor that happened that day because then we have the issue of if the citizen who made the comments has already left and is that fair? Should we be, you know, we're, and we're still, we've kind of made a, made it a practice that we don't address the citizen comments at that time. So I don't think it would be appropriate to end the meeting with that. So much.
So, yeah, I appreciate that, Mayor. And, and I, I think, I think we're kind of trying to figure things out as we go. And I, I have felt though, that we have had council briefings where we really had no time to bring up new topics. And so if we can, like you say, bake, bake some time into our briefing so that we can do those round robins and those updates and if council members have a new topic they'd like to broach and see if the council has some interest in pursuing that new ordinance or whatever, whatever it may be, then that would be great. I just would like for us to have that opportunity to do that. And I don't feel that we've had it up to this point very well.
Councilor Dumont.
Thank you. I agree with both of you. The policy, once we know that something works, until we know it works, that let's not keep messing with the policies. And I really agree that we have tried ways to get things on the agenda and we just can't seem to get it done. We run out of time in our briefings, at the end of the meetings didn't work. Then we're going to have the fifth Monday of the month briefing for just open conversation and that fell through as well. And so we still don't have conversations. What I've done in past meetings that I've chaired is that on all of the agendas, right up front, after the approval of minutes, has always been just every time, like standing items and there were always, um, feedback and updates from my members who sat on other boards that had to report back to us as a group for our decision-making process. And those were the first three, after the minutes, every meeting with those three things, we'd have that update and then we'd get in with the old business and then the new business. Something like that for a briefing would help, but then that also puts a little bit more onus on staff because they already have a whole bunch of stuff they're trying to parse out through meetings, through the briefings. Briefings are what booked until through May now or something like that? So I don't know if this is going to require a special meeting every month for just council issues because it's not a fifth Monday of every month. So that would be, have to be a discussion. How often are we willing to meet to actually meet the needs of the, of our constituents?
Counselor Stokes, followed by the city attorney.
So I think it's a, a great idea to at least have some time to, to talk amongst one another, especially with Sunshine. This is our, this is our body to actually talk to one another and, and do so in the public forum. So to set aside and we, you know, we mentioned trying it at the end of a meeting, maybe if we set aside 30 minutes at the beginning and, and like the, uh, I believe as Cliff said, that's our time. Stick to it. 30 minutes done, it's on to the next topic and try to do that every meeting, hope, maybe that would work. I did like the committee representation and I know it's not an official committee yet, but, um, you know, I was working on just a little write-up on the blue zones for, for, to send via email, uh, send it obviously through the official channels to the city manager first, but, uh, just so everybody who wasn't able to clue in on the, uh, the meeting could have some background knowledge. So, you know, I, I do, you know, think that's a good idea to let people know kind of what's going on and get the, and have a sharing of information, um, uh, that we can do so in, in the appropriate sense with, as applicable to Sunshine.
City attorney, followed by Counselor Nichols.
Thanks, Mike. I just wanted to remind the council that with adoption of the Civic Pro new software, agenda prep software, we're going to be able to provide counsel if they desire with a consent agenda or bulk agenda approval section, which will enable you to bulk approve or consent approve multiple agenda items just by one single motion. And that will help save you a lot of time. And if you employ that consent agenda, then we can add more items to the briefing. And if council wants one of the items to be any of the, the opportunities for discussion or whatever it is you want, I just wanted to remind you that we can have that consent agenda. An example being when, for example, we have four or five minutes for approval, you won't have to walk through each one of the five minutes. And I think about a couple of months ago or so, we had something like that. And I was just gritting my teeth because I was thinking, gosh, my clients are having to walk through all five minutes. They're going to approve all five minutes because they all, the minutes were acceptable and you did. And, but we wasted or we utilized 15 minutes or it felt like 10 or 15 minutes. And I thought, boy, they could have covered something else in those 10 or 15 minutes and could have knocked all that out in a second. Another one, just a quick example is, you know, recently I drafted chapter 24 repeal, chapter 24. It was a registration of persons code that's from the 1950s and none of our departments need it. You agreed, you voted seven, seven zero to get rid of it. That could have been added to a consent. So you, you may see agendas where, you know, we set it up that you will have half of the agenda items on a consent agenda. You will properly handle those and approve those within minutes, couple of minutes. And then you can have the rest of the agenda time for many other topics or however else you'd like to see it handled. Just wanted to remind you that, that that's coming soon. Okay?
Thank you, Chris. Mayor Nichols.
I did think we had a process. If we wanted to get something added to one of these meetings, then, you know, we could email you and get an item added to a meeting. I don't think, you know, if we, I, I, I don't know if it's, if we can determine, you know, or make a list and, and check it off. I mean, I don't really know if we want to go into a meeting with, without a very set schedule or, you know, I mean, more than, you know, I don't want to, I don't think it should really drag very long, but I mean, we do have another, we've always been able to add items to meetings if we just contacted you, right?
Yes and no.
Okay.
Let me, let me give a little background to that. You know, we have, we have two different types of, of meetings that we have. We have the regular council meeting and we have the briefings. In the briefings, in my understanding of how this organization is treated, the briefings is when the city manager needs to relay information to the council. In the council meetings are when you're taking formal action on any given items. The items that are traditionally put in front of you at a council briefing are the items that I and the department directors, executive leadership feel are important, that you need to be aware of, that we need to receive direction on, or that we need to have a discussion on. If an individual council member were to contact me and say, can you please add a briefing item for the following topic? My response would, would traditionally be, we need to figure out if there's a consensus to put this item on a briefing topic because I don't want to set the precedent that anytime a council member contacts me with a thought of what they want to talk about at a briefing, that I'm automatically adding it. So I do like the concept of setting up some time for council to bet their own thoughts on. like the concept of setting up some time for council to set their own thoughts on what should be included at future briefings. But for the most, what you're seeing are items that are specifically going through me that I feel best interest for council to focus their time on and to give some very specific direction to us as staff, we should proceed. Now, that also leads to the issue of council agendas for formal meetings. Again, everything that we take in front of you is something that requires a formal action. And I think that if the mayor and I can work through some processes with regards to the proclamations and wave makers, that'll clean up the one element that is somewhat subjective. So, so really, I'm looking for some guidance from you as, as the council, as the sitting body of how you put that input into the council briefing topics, whether you want to have some time set aside at the briefings, whether you want to do it at meetings. But everything you're seeing up to this point in time is pretty much at the city manager's discretion. And I don't want to create, I don't want to create a rift where I'm telling some council members, I like your topic, so I'm putting them on. And other council members, I don't think it's, so I'm not going to bring it up. That really doesn't, doesn't do me any good amongst all seven of you.
So if somebody wanted to add a topic, they sent you, they send you an email, you would distribute it individually to us and ask us if we wanted it to be added to it. And if the majority of people say they want that added to it, wouldn't you just add that? When you do it that way? Wouldn't that be an easy way?
That, that would not be the preferred method, specifically from the perspective that city managers are supposed to, they're not supposed to poll the board behind the scenes. But certainly if there's a, a list of topics that are provided to me by individual council members, I can certainly bring it up at a briefing and say, I received three requests from three different council members. I'd like to put it out there and see what your thoughts are. And I could do that at a briefing going forward. But yeah, I wouldn't want to do it behind the scenes based on polling council members. So what, what do y'all think of that for a methodology of a council member reaching out to me with an idea for a briefing topic? And then me bringing it to the briefing and basically saying, this council member contacted me, this is the topic, and let's talk about it and see if you want a full briefing on the item? I like that. I'm seeing heads nod. Couple.
I liked Chris's idea of, you know, just having some time baked into the briefing so that we could bring stuff up and, and, you know, while we're, while we're all there. But I don't know. I like that. It just seems to be less work on you, but.
Where, where I came from, it was done at the end of regular council meetings. They went around, they went round robin to each council member and they either did a happy birthday or thank you to this organization. And occasionally you would have a council member that would say, is there a consensus to bring up this particular item at a future workshop for discussion? And workshops were what we called them instead of briefings. And if there was a general nod of the heads, then the city manager knew to add it onto the list for an upcoming briefing topic.
And that's what they, they do that in Atlantic Beach, which is why I brought it up to, to do it at the end of a council meeting. But I understand the, the concerns with doing that at the end of a council meeting, which is why I would be okay with doing it in a designated time at a briefing.
We can certainly give that a shot of trying it at the end of council briefings. Maybe not necessarily starting with today's based on the time. But, but with a future briefing and maybe we make that the first item rather than the last item. We reserve 10 minutes or 15 minutes and whatever we can get done in that 15 minutes for briefing items, then we dive into the rest of the agenda. Y'all think that would be something worth giving a shot? Seeing some heads nod?
Mike, actually Sandy brought up a good point and you mentioned it, a couple, and we were used, we're in Largo, we used to be, if we did it at the end of a briefing, but it's not, we're not having a meeting at the end of the briefing. It's a, I'd like, is there a consensus to bring up this topic? But you don't talk about the topic because nobody knows about the topic until the briefing. So I think it's, it can be efficient to do it at the end of the meeting while people are there and it's fresh on your, on, on individuals' minds. But it's not the place to debate the topic.
Correct. Correct. We could either do it at the beginning of the briefing or the ending of the briefing, but we can certainly add it as an agenda item onto each briefing. So that way there is time carved out for it and everyone knows it's on the agenda. So we can certainly give that a shot going forward. I'm not sure where we left off. Mayor Pro Tim Nichols, your hand is raised? No. And Mayor Hoffman?
I, um, just as we're talking and reflecting back on kind of where we've come, I know, especially for the new members, it probably seems like we spend a lot of time talking about how we're going to talk about things. And that's true, but I really think that these are processes that we are going to be able to put in place, see if they work and, and put them in place for the long haul, because even these briefings being on the opposite weeks of our council meetings is new. Even having a briefing right before the council meetings was relatively new. And those were always rushed at the end and we never really had a chance to just kind of open it up and talk like this. So, so we've, we've come a long way and I just want to reassure you guys that we are making progress. And, and hopefully, as we spend less time talking about how we're going to talk, we'll have more time to, to, to put in these other items that we're talking about now. So hang in there. And I would also say, we have the announcement period during our meeting that I would fully encourage you to utilize. There's, you know, you have to be a little cautious. There's been some criticism of, of using that time to self-promote. But I think that you guys are all doing things out in the community that even your fellow council members might not know about. So I would encourage you to share that during the announcement times. Already on the agenda, it's already a process that we have in place. The other item that I wanted to mention that I forgot in my little listing of all the items is the time of our regular meetings. It's explicitly stated that they are at 7:00 PM on the first and third Monday of each month. I would prefer to take out the specific time and say something like, at a time conducive to citizen involvement, because I have heard a lot of people say that they prefer 6:00 PM. I personally do, and I've heard citizens say that. Some of our active citizens say that. So I think that we need to leave ourselves some discretion there and not have it tied to, to seven o'clock in our, in our ordinances.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would also point out that, you know, you made reference to the fact that right now the briefings are occurring on the second and fourth, with the meetings on the first and third. The only reason that we're able to have the meetings at the 6:00 PM time is because we're currently still in the declared state of emergency. At some point, that declaration will go away and we will be forced by ordinance to move those meetings back to seven o'clock, unless there is a change in our code of ordinances to stipulate either no time or a different time. One of the questions that we'll need to deal with when that occurs is whether or not council wants to continue with the briefings on the second and fourth, or stack them with the meetings on the first and third have, had been done historically. So that's, that's a thought as well as we move forward. I think the general feedback I've gotten from the council at this point is that you like doing the briefings on the second and fourth and dedicating more time to it. And in particularly, you like doing them through Zoom. So you can do them from the location of your preference. You're not voting on anything. We are having discussions. We're able to have consultants from outside agencies weigh in, et cetera. So the, I guess the question for you all is, what do you think of the mayor's proposal of changing that ordinance to eliminate the time and put in some language about time that is conducive to citizens' input? And I think, well, I see, I see two, three. I'm seeing a handful of people nod. Okay. Does anyone have any comments on that specific topic of changing the time?
I, I just have a thought and it's just a, just a thought is during daylight savings time, if we, and I don't know what time we're on now, if it's daylight savings or not daylight savings, whatever it is, that we do them at six, but at the other time when we have more daylight later in the day, we still do them at seven. Just, I don't know, for, for those of us that enjoy, that do enjoy sunshine, it is kind of nice. Once again, only a thought, no idea if that's feasible, practical to have them at two different times throughout the year, but I, I kind of like that idea. So.
Counselor Golding?
I, I have to say, Chet, though, I think it's important to have consistency for the citizens. You know, I think if we change it, it, it can be confusing. And I will, I will say that our other two beach sister cities, I think they all meet starting at six. So we wouldn't, you know, we're, we're a little bit behind maybe since we're doing our meetings at seven. But I, I'd be fine with changing it to six, but I also like the idea of making the language not so limiting.
We can certainly address that.
I, I do have one other thing that I wanted to mention, and this was brought up at, I don't know, it was a briefing several, several, several months ago. And I was looking at our ordinances, section 2-36, Submittal of Agenda to Members in Advance. And, you know, I, I'd like to, I'd like to put out there that I would really, I would really like to see us get the agenda earlier, that if we could, just because when we get the agenda Thursday night, and then I, you know, I work all day on Friday, I essentially lose a day that I could talk with staff about something that's on the agenda. And then I don't, you know, and staff also doesn't have the luxury of getting my input earlier either. And so then the input comes in on Monday and that's the day of our city council meeting. And I just feel like it's, it's very, it's very restrictive that we only have, you know, those days, those, you know, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, essentially, and part of Monday to at least contact staff, try to get answers to questions and that sort of thing, let alone the fact that, that, you know, citizens only have that amount of time to try to digest what's on the agenda too. And this has been something that's been a concern of mine for a long time, even when I was coming to council meetings as a citizen. And, and when our boards get their agenda packets too, because the boards are getting their agenda packets in the same timeframe. And they have a lot of things that they, if you're Board of Adjustment, and I think Dan would know, you know, from his experience, if you're going to go to visit all these properties that are on the Board of Adjustment agenda, you know, you've got to work time into your schedule to do that. And, and the weekend, you know, so I, I don't know about everybody else, but I end up spending my weekend, you know, working on the agenda and going through the agenda packet and trying to do all of the, the research and due diligence that, that I need to do with each meeting. So I would like to put it out there. I, I know that, I think Atlantic Beach gets their agendas maybe on Wednesday. But then I looked and St. Augustine just recently changed it to where they're getting their agenda packets on Tuesday. I found something in the press newspaper article about it to where they changed it so that they could get their agenda packets earlier. So I'd like to put that out there as well as something to discuss among the council.
Like now or at a briefing?
Well, I, we're talking about processes and that's why I brought it up, because this is one of those things that is our, is a process.
Yeah. Well, I agree. Best practices, like if you're on the Board of, of an org, any other, any other organization other than government, you, you need your information a week in advance. That's your best practice. It's your board members have your information a week in advance. And I'm not sure if that's practicable for the city. And I understand staff is always up against the, whatever that phrase is, it's, it's late. Up against the wall, I guess, is what they say. With getting the agenda out just by the Thursday, but the Wednesday would really be helpful, especially if we have questions and we try not to contact you on weekends. And then you don't want to contact your department heads on weekends when we have questions. And that's when we can actually look at this stuff. So I can stop sending you texts that say in capital letters, do not reply to this until Monday. Just put it on my list. The, you know, having it on Wednesday would be very, it would be more helpful than getting it on Thursdays. But for me, my Fridays are always packed with meetings. And Fridays are gone for me. Fridays and then Mondays are usually filled with meetings as well. So.
Didn't we just decide we weren't going to debate these issues?
No, that was for the end of the.
We're going to want a list and then debate them?
Mr. Nichols, that was why I first questioned, is this a thing for the briefing or is this a thing for a policy? So the, that, I would agree with though, possible Wednesday. I know the Monday would be too much, but the Wednesday would be very helpful.
I think in terms of the ordinance, it says at least two days prior. So I don't think that we need to change that because there is always going to be a tight turnaround. I know how much time the staff spends putting these agendas together. So there really is a tight turnaround from, from one meeting's agenda to the next. I feel like we, I think this actual body has already had this conversation about the timing. And I think that we were largely comfortable with the two days prior, especially given how much time is being spent previewing some of the major legislation that in advance at our briefing. So we do have a more opportunity to prepare. So I'm very comfortable with the timing right now. I know when I have a council meeting that I need to set aside some weekend time to go through my book and be ready with questions. So, so I'm comfortable with it. I'm certainly comfortable with leaving, leaving the ordinance as it is, since that allows the flexibility of the at least two days prior.
Counselor Golding?
I, I wasn't suggesting a change in the ordinance, although Mike had highlighted it as that was something that I guess had been brought up before. And because at least two days prior covers, you know, covers whatever it is. But my, but my point of bringing it up was along the lines of council expectations and which I don't know if it is an actual policy, but it, but to discuss a council expectation that is this something that we could do where we could get the agenda earlier so that, you know, or, or is it something that is a policy that it would, you know, but it's not something that has to be an ordinance?
I could, if I could offer up a, a recommendation, you heard the city attorney talk a little bit earlier tonight about the fact that when we go to our new website, we're also getting the new agenda management software package that goes with it. It would probably behoove us at least on the staff end to take a look and see if there are any efficiencies that we can improve into the process as we migrate from our current process, which I can tell you when we put that in place several months ago. I know Karen Nelson is on the line because I can see she's logged in. She's probably thinking, oh dear God, don't make me change the process again because the directors will kill me. But if we were going to make a change, the appropriate time to make the change would be when we migrated to the new software agenda management system. So if you could bear with us perhaps for several months while Jacob gets the project up and running and we take a look at the capabilities of that agenda management software and see if there's any time we can shave off on the distribution side as opposed to the submission sides. I think we really need to take a look at that. But right now, the process that we have in place is literally starting 30 days in advance. And we have gone through the, the process of mapping it all out on the city calendar for all of the department directors and their administrative support staff to see and be able to follow for every meeting that we have out there. So if we were to try and make that adjustment now for the extra 24 hours, we would need to go into the system and make adjustments on every step for every meeting that we've already put on the calendar. And I think that might throw a lot of people off, given that we've just codified the one we've got. So that would be my proposal, but clearly if council says they want something different, staff will smile and make it happen.
I like the idea of waiting to see if our website provides some additional efficiencies, which I, I don't see how it wouldn't be more efficient than the current process.
I concur. Does anyone have any other comments, questions, suggestions? I'm not seeing any hands raised and I'm seeing our time is 7:21 coming up on the two hour mark. I think this was a productive briefing tonight, going, going through the three items that we did. We've got a little bit of homework on our end as staff of some things to do. And that's pretty much it.
Do you want to note on Saturday's event, our strategic planning meeting? Our strategic planning meeting?
Yes. Let me just remind all the council that on Saturday, starting at nine o'clock, we have the strategic session with Florida Institute of Government occurring at Parks and Recreation in the community center. Please feel free to show up a little bit earlier than nine o'clock. Nine o'clock is when we will start. So if you want to get there between 8:30 and quarter of nine, that would be perfect. You should have been sent an email today with your request for lunch. We are providing lunch to everyone, as well as some snacks and drinks throughout the day. We have from 9:00 AM till 4:00 PM blocked out to work on the first two topics, which is creating a vision for the community and revisiting the mission statement for the organization. Florida Institute of Government is very excited about the process and working with us. I can tell you that staff is as well. You should have representation from each department there as well. If not the director, then a high ranking member of their management team. It will be casual dress in terms of what we would normally wear here at City Hall on Fridays. So I think most of our directors will be wearing jeans and golf shirts. Please feel free to wear the same. We don't want anyone to be uncomfortable when we're going to be in the room for a number of hours together. Am I missing anything there?
I don't think so.
Okay.
And masks, too, I guess?
Bring masks, but we will have the room set up for social distancing.
Okay.
That was one of the conditions of Florida Institute of Government being able to travel to this event, was that they needed to make sure, make sure that all protocols would be followed for health and safety. So the way we've got the room configured, each individual should be sitting no closer than six feet away from the next individual, front, back, left, and right. So all council will be up at the front of the room, working with the three FIG facilitators, along with a projector and flip charts. The staff will be in rows behind you all. And then we will have seats open in the back to the public, because again, this is a publicly noticed meeting. Any members of the public can show up and listen for five minutes or five hours their call. But we are not providing food and beverages for those members of the public, just for the elected officials and staff that are required to be there. Councilor Stokes, I see you have your hand raised, followed by Dumas.
Mike, would you please resend, have the staff resend the vision statements that you had gotten from the workshops that you had done with the community? I can't remember where that was in the, I think it was in a council agenda, or maybe it was in a briefing. I think it was a briefing. But yeah, we're, just so we can, I can print it out on my own, but just so I have it available to print out, that would be very helpful for this meeting.
We can certainly do that. Councilor Dumont?
I have a question along the same lines. Is that information, you're going to email it to us prior to the meeting, but is it going to be in the same type of a format, just the long format? What was it, 12, 13 pages or so? Or is the information going to be grouped, or do you know how the Florida League of Cities, I'm sorry, the, the Florida Institute is going to be setting this up? Like, we have to go in there, because I read through the questionnaire that they sent us. And that really is getting at what the visioning sessions got at. So are we just putting down the visioning information into those questions?
I, I think that Florida Institute of Government in the email that I forward to you all from Jeff Hendry, he's really looking for your personal information to answer those questions. He's not looking for a regurgitation of what's already been done by the groups. He's looking for the council's thoughts. And I think he's going to do some introductory work to start off the meeting, whereby he'll be talking about the five layers, so to speak, starting with vision, mission, values, goals, and objectives, and action items, and working with the council on the prioritization, what's already been achieved, and what needs to be worked on first. So in terms of the format, to answer your question, Council Dumas, if I send it back out, I'm going to send out the same document that I sent to council before. I have not manipulated the data. It does not mean that Mr. Hendry might not have some key pieces in a different format that he's going to work with council on at that session. But that's, I'm leaving that to him as his bailiwick as the facilitator for this. He and I have not gone through in detail what his steps of facilitation will look like at this point.
All right, thanks.
I will say, just in having spoken with him briefly on a call last week, that he's a pro. And I think he said something like, he's guided 30 or so cities through this process. So he knows what he's doing. And I would just say, this isn't something you have to over prepare for. I would just come with an open mind and kind of let the process work. Because, and I said at the end of the call, I think we're ready for this. And I think this is the right time for us to, to really start shaping this, this process. So I think it's going to be a really good day. But I would just say, come comfortable and bring an open mind.
Okay. Well, thank you all for the briefing tonight. It's just about 7:30. We'll wrap it up. We'll see you all on Saturday morning.